So five, I'm gonna call the meeting to order, please stand for the pledge. Derek, could you do Roca, please?
President Buker?
Here.
Trustee Barhite?
Here.
Trustee Brooks?
Here.
Trustee Polley?
Here.
Trustee Faber?
Here.
Trustee Hopkins?
Yeah.
Trustee Gant? Thank you.
Did we meet open meeting compliance?
The agenda was posted on Wednesday, June 11th, both here at Village Hall and on the Village website.
Trustees, do I have approval of the agenda sequence?
Yes.
Um, I will make a motion to move item number 12, the fire department. To immediately after item number eight. So between eight and nine?
Yep.
I need a second.
No, second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? Alright, number six, public comments. Did you grab the sheet, sir? Uh, please address the boards, there's no back and forth discussions and we have a three minute time limit. Alright, Mr. McTernan, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Attorney Michael McTernan, 6633 Green Bay Road, Kenosha, Wisconsin, 53142. Um, as you're well aware, I, I represent, um, the Kenosha County Fair. Um, as you are also aware, we came before this board. And we asked for specific information in order to receive approval for, uh, an oversight on my client's part on, in connection with Dasfest. There was a tremendous amount of information that was exchanged back and forth in order for us to enter an agreement with the village board in order to us to proceed with Dasfest. My clients, with good faith and with all the information that was presented to not only his board, but to the entire village, provided information. And agreed to all the terms and conditions that were required in order to get approval for Dasfest. Nothing's changed. Except, the village decides to send a new version of the contract to my client demanding. That the $2,500 quote that was provided by the village fire department wasn't enough. It actually was $7,500, three times what was provided. My clients come before this board and they ask you for information and provide you information candidly, openly, and honestly. And they look for this village board and this administration in order to work with them openly and honestly. Not to change the contract terms and tell them, there's a new amount you need to pay. And not only that, but then you have the administration contacting the state of Wisconsin and telling them that they're operating in an event that's outside the bounds of their contract event that they have with the state. That they're in violation of their permit. That isn't true. And, and it's insulting to this organization, the Kenosha County Fair that's been here, how long in this community? Over a hundred years? And I guess if one of the, uh, an organization that sits here before this board and operates in this community is treated like this. How was someone who doesn't have the resources or the ability to call me? To come look at what's going on and say, what in the world is happening? And why? It doesn't bode well for the village. Thank you.
Wes Jacobs, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name's Wes Jacobs, I live at 11820 242nd Avenue, Trever, Wisconsin. I'm requesting a detailed breakdown of all the costs associated with the destruction of the wetland. Some, but not all encompassing in the detail costs would be such as fuel, oil, man hours and costs. Maintenance of equipment after wetland use. Cost of removing the front end loader from the wet cot, wetland cotton tails, or cattails. Also, what funds were used in this, uh, process? And I'd like to see this in, in the public and on the web, uh, on Salem Lakes Facebook. Thank you.
Amanda Nedweski, come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Amanda Nedweski, State Representative for the 32nd Assembly District, for those of you who didn't already know that. Uh, I'm here tonight to address the board with a little bit of a legislative update, what's going on in Madison, and I'm doing this throughout the district and several different municipalities. Cause I don't get to see you all and talk to you all very often, I get you all in one place here tonight. So, right now, the, uh, Assembly and Senate are working on redrafting the, the, the state budget, so the governor delivered his budget in February and we have kind of stripped it out and are building it from, from scratch. We are hoping to have a budget by the end of this month, as is required, although. Uh, if the state does not have a budget by June 30th, we do not close down the government, we just continue to operate at previous levels of spending, so there's not a lot of risk there. If we go beyond June 30th a little bit, it won't have a huge impact. However, we are trying very, very hard to get to that June 30th deadline because local municipalities are impacted in particular by. Uh, any adjustments in local government funding and shared revenue that would be coming your way right away in July, so we want to make sure that we get that through for you. Um, the Joint Committee on Finance has been through about half of the state agencies. Uh, last week we did K-12 and technical colleges, we worked on some tax cuts, uh, that are income tax cuts and retirement income tax cuts. And this week we'll be addressing a number of agencies, including UW system, hopefully. Um, what we have not addressed yet is transportation, and that's a huge item that affects all of us, so I'll be talking about that in a couple of minutes. There is also something of interest at the local level, we have a, a bill out on EMS training funding and that may or may not affect you depending if it gets passed or not, but I think it has bipartisan support and I'm hoping to see funding for that in the budget. As you all know, we had a very successful dairy breakfast in the district, uh, over the weekend and we are looking forward to a fun and super fun summer full of activities all throughout the district. Twin Lakes had a Rock the Beach or something yesterday, it was, was it? Super success, so, um, I'm actually here tonight because I was meeting with the fair director on the impact of the county W project, which will be coming over the next few years. I wanted to let you know that I've been working very closely with county executive Samantha Kirkman on the planning for that project. Um, and I'm trying to find some funding, so I did make a budget motion to the Joint Committee on Finance, um, to help with some funding for that, I don't know if it'll get approved or not, but I'm working really hard to help. The county so that the, the entire cost of that project is not in the levy. As well as, um, a separate budget motion of $100,000 for a planning grant, so, you know, as county executive Kirkman and I have been in discussion about. Phasing of the project and, and how a road closure would have an economic impact on the local community if W had to be closed at any phase throughout the distance, especially in front of the fair. Um, so I was working with the fair tonight to understand what the economic impact is for them and the surrounding community, I've been in touch with local business owners. It is a county project, I don't have any say in the timing of it or how it is actually executed, but I'm working really hard to make sure that people know they can lean on me for state help, and if there's any questions, please reach out. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Edquist, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Mark Edquist, 2816 176 Avenue, Kenosha, that's your 144. Uh, I'm here talking on behalf of the county fair. We have been in front of this board, uh, we yielded that we, we maybe had made a mistake or hadn't kept up with, with our conditional use permit. We came here to many meetings to try to, to pacify that in, in the Dasfest, we had many meetings at the Dasfest. We didn't just send our attorney, our executive board was here every night, some of our regular board was also here for all these meetings. And we listened and we spoke our, and we got a proposal from Mr. Carr from the party department, we signed a proposal, we didn't fight it at all at the end. And then all of a sudden in the 11th hour, now we get another proposal from the village board, or the village. That is triple what we sat through all these meetings and, and discussed and relied on. So now in the 11th hour, when, when we're backed into a corner, now all of a sudden the village, and not only that, then they, it, when that didn't look like maybe, then they went to the state. To try to get the state to concur with them, so that we would have to come up with this and pay this and, and that the state said that. Our permit through the state is perfectly legal for what we're doing with it. I just think it's, it doesn't show well for the village of Salem to take a business that's been in their community for over a hundred years. And, and just start at the last minute trying to flex things that have already been through many meetings. We sat here, if you add up all the meetings, we sat here for hours and listened to what we needed to do and how we needed to fix things of things that were maybe in the past were overlooked. And then all of a sudden now, when we thought that we were on the right track. All of a sudden now we come up with this other proposal that does nothing more than triple what it's costing us. We went from three people on EMS to four people and the price tripled. I, I just don't, I don't think that's something that this village board and this village really wants to, to put their name behind. Thank you.
Thank you. Myron Daniel, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Uh, Myron Daniels, uh, 24755 31st Street, Salem, Wisconsin. I am also here to make comments about, uh, uh, the Kenosha County Fair Association. Uh, I've been involved with the Kenosha County Fair since, uh, about 1965. I showed my first calf. Uh, I went through the ranks showing cattle, having a fun time, learning, uh, then through the ranks of teaching other young children. How to respect animals, grow the animals, do this, do that, and. Until I got involved with the fair board, I never realized the amount of work that goes in to put on fair. Um, we are nonprofit. Um, we continue to try and add. More activities on the fair because quite frankly, a lot of the infrastructure needs a lot of work. And being nonprofit, we have to try and figure out how to pay for all that and just adding on. Three times the amount for one specific event is, is to me just ludicrous. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Leaker, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Chris Leaker, 17320 Horton Road, Bristol, Wisconsin. I'm also a member of the Board of the Kenosha County Fair. I'm also here to speak on that behalf, um, I was confused as to why your administrator would say that our EMR license is only good for the racetrack, that's not true. The EMR license is licensed to Kenosha County Fair Association for the entire property. And as a matter of fact, Helen at the state seemed agitated as by the amount of calls she got from the village inquiring about this. We called to verify, to make sure that we were in the right and we were gonna be legal to do that, she seemed agitated, um. Your chief, I believe, had a thorough understanding of what the event was. He had a lot of correspondence with our manager as to what the event was beforehand, so to say that he didn't understand the days is absolutely incorrect because the days are clearly listed on the proposal. They said a minimum of three personnel, I believe he had an understanding of the event, um, I don't think that's accurate to say that he didn't. Your administrator said that we needed, we would need a transport, you guys would have the same thing if you had provided the service for us because your proposal clearly states that you are not a transport service, that we would have to. Have a payments command transport. Um, so that proposal is no different than ours, she said that we are not a transport like it's not adequate, that it's the same as what your proposal is, chief's card proposal. Um, we're here for the plan commission and your plan commission chairman looked at me and said that I don't understand what it's like to be there making the decisions. As a matter of fact, I do, I'm on the Village of Bristol Plan Commission and Village Board, so for her to say that to me is not accurate either. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Andrew Ironside, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Andrew Ironside, 5528 381st Avenue, Burlington, Wisconsin, um, I'm also here on behalf of Kenosha County Fair Board tonight. Um, I'm a new member of the board, um, executive board and, uh. Been a fair my whole life, supposed to be a fun event, stress, you know, making fun for the whole family and this year's just been such a mess because of everything going on and. Um, for you guys to throw back a proposal at us after we already had, um, one that was signed, um, just, just doesn't seem right to us and, uh. Wish you guys would work with us a little better and that's all I can really say, so, thank you.
Thank you. Randall Rossi, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Randall Rossi, 18020 75th Street, Bristol, Wisconsin. I'm also here speaking for the fair board, I just like to plead with everybody that we just start getting along and I, I think it's. It's hard enough for us to run the fair being nonprofit and we're, our object at the fair is to make it a better fair than it was last year. And I think all this stuff. With, uh, making all these demands on us are just putting us through an unnecessary hardship. So I'd just like a little more consideration, that's about it, I don't want to double up what everybody else said, though, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go to number seven, President's Comments, 7.1. Uh, well, actually, before I get to that, um, I would like to respond to the fair. I can only speak for myself, I was unaware that there was communication sent to you with a different price prior to it being sent and prior to myself getting the phone call. I can understand how you are upset and you are confused as to how that can happen. Um, I did reach out to staff to ask them if you could in fact provide your own EMS or supplement, right? I wasn't sure what could be, um. What could be done, they did reach out to find out if that could be done, um. I guess, I wish that the response would have come back to me before it went to you, and so I'm going to ask staff from now on that any and all communication with the fair comes to me first. To be discussed before it goes to the fair. We will be putting this on our next agenda, agenda to be discussed as a board as to what we are going to do with that, okay? 7.1, discussion and possible action on date and time change of future village board regular meetings to the first Tuesday of every month at 6:00 PM. So this, uh, we would like to change village board, uh, meetings to have only one meeting a month. Um, and in order to, uh, to do that, we need to make sure that we have it after when the, um. Plan commission meeting is in case there's things that we need to approve. So, we would like to start this in August. With the August meeting. So that would be, um. August 5th would be the meeting date. So, um. I guess this is up for discussion, if that is okay with everyone, to move to just one meeting a month, obviously it will be a long meeting. Most likely, and if we can change the dates from Mondays to Tuesdays, does anyone have an objection to that at all? No.
Um, I have a problem with Tuesdays, cause Tuesdays is fire night.
Okay.
And I still think we, we should still keep two meetings a month, I think we should do all the discussion on the first one and do all the acting on it. On the second time we have it.
Okay.
So we get rid of some of this. Rank of the, of the meetings.
Anyone else have any other?
Uh, I, I agree with Bill, when, when we had a, a committee of a whole meeting, we discussed everything, then, then two weeks later we voted, you know, as a, a regular meeting to where we voted on it or. Acted on it, okay?
Mm-hmm.
So, that's two meetings a month.
Prior to having two meetings a month, we used to have the, uh, when we were town, I can only speak of the town. But we had board members that represented, uh, uh, planning and zoning and, uh, the park commission. And, uh, if questions came up with regard to what was going on there, the, the, uh, elected official were able to answer it. Then we decided that we're gonna have committee of the whole meetings and discuss everything. But our committee of the whole meetings have not really. Hand out enough, uh, the way that they were initially intended or intended. I'm, I'd, I'm not, I have no problem with one meeting, but. Uh, for a while, uh, we have, uh. Uh, seem to, uh, attract an awful lot of attention, which. Everybody has a right to voice their opinions and, and, and express how they feel about our village, but, uh. You know, we're really here to do business and not, uh. Some of the things that do come up, but, uh, we, we used to have one meeting and, uh, they were, they were long meetings, but. I'm not opposed to one meeting.
Just wanted to jump in here and say, uh, call back to Bill, um, so you, uh, every single Tuesday is bad for you?
No, we have. Didn't like me, chief. It's all, it's not directly always on Tues, it's always on a Tuesday, but we don't have a direct schedule.
Sometimes it's flexible based on the amount of outside instructors that we can utilize, uh, we keep, we try to keep it flexible for that opportunity, summer's been a little different than the winter time, winter time's a lot more structured, so. Uh, we try to do first and third, but because of some of the opportunities we, we gather, it's flexible. So, so you could do second and fourth, it sounds like, if I'm understanding this conversation correctly.
I would rather stick it to Mondays so I can do all my fire stuff on Tuesday and everything, I, I appreciate that, I have schedules, I have Monday I do town, Tuesday fire, Wednesday something else.
We understand, there was a lot of thought put back, uh, behind this on why we're changing it from Monday to Tuesday. Um, I also do think that having, I guess my question is with the cow meetings, like what difference does it make, we're allowed to discuss and act. What does the, having one meeting where you discuss only and then you act at the, what, what advantage does having two different meetings have?
Oftentimes in the past, during a cow meeting, something might come up from a board member who would then, uh. Want, or other board members would want to dig in even deeper before they voted on it, that's the only thing I can think of.
However, if we have one meeting a month, you could have the agenda. What is plan commission, the third Wednesday of the month? You would be able to have the agenda of almost a week and a half early. I would assume, because there's a lot of time for staff to prepare it. So if, if the plan commission meeting was the third meeting of, uh, Wednesday of the month. Staff can have, you know, we might not make it the first month, but definitely I would assume by the second month we could prepare better. But I would think that this then gives you enough time, um, it would be going out, you know, I would assume the goal is the week. That the plan commissions, so either Thursday or Friday, that gives you a week, well, five days. Uh, sometimes even longer depending on how the weeks fall, plus the Monday to ask your questions and give staff the time. The, um, the decision to move it to a Tuesday was, I understand, I know I do a lot of my work on the weekends. That if I had any follow-up questions, we could send those on Monday instead of being a surprise here to staff, so. That is where that came from and, um, Tuesdays really just seem to work out the best with all of the other meetings that are. There in the month, so.
And I agree, I like that Tuesday and I agree with that, and I also am jumping ahead a little bit, but I notice on 8.5 trustees announcements and agenda items. To put on the agenda.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I like that addition as well, I can see where that would can, you know, work in conjunction with, uh. Having this one meeting that we know what's.
Right, and so Sarah's done a great job of. Trying to restructure things and putting. Stops on staff and the board, so that if y'all noticed, you, you got your agenda a lot earlier than normal this time.
That's where I was looking to just jump in and say, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you that we got the agenda on Wednesday in advance of the meeting, which gives us more time to review and be prepared. So that's pretty great.
So I think this will give Sarah and staff more time to be better prepared to get us everything that we need, right? And um,
And then you can raise the bar to a full week and a day in advance.
Correct.
Sorry, and thank you.
Yeah, I think that's the goal. I think that's the goal with one meeting month, right? So, um,
That's a very important point. When you think about what staff has to do when you have two meetings to prepare
It's a lot of work.
Meeting and then all of a sudden do another one. This way they can spare things out a little longer. But uh, if I believe it's
Yeah.
Would we then, like, let's say something super time sensitive uh, came along, we just uh,
Not unless it's a uh,
Right. Yes.
Special case.
Very special case, super time sensitive. Then, then we would call a special board meeting as needed.
Correct. And if, if we agree to this, Sarah can send her timeline out so that everyone is aware of the cutoffs and, you know, and I think this will help too, because when you have agenda item requests, um, as we decided when we put this on, you can request it. Then we're going to discuss it as a board before we decide to use staff and legals resources. And then it will go on and agenda if the board collectively feels that it's warranted for that. There might be things that, you know, are different that we would just automatically put on, but I think this just will work out better for everyone and it will um, allow everyone to be better prepared.
Madam President, and just hope for everyone's education, I believe your code would allow for this. Your code says that regular meetings shall be on the second Monday of each month at seven or as otherwise established by motion of the board. So that tells me two things. One, when the initial ordinance uh, was created or whenever this was created, uh, at that point in time, there was at least a practice of once a month. It was selected Monday, whether you select Tuesday. Fine. Um, and then obviously you can change it by motion.
Yeah.
So then with the slightly altered, I think you kind of just touched on it a couple of seconds ago, but a, a, a meeting or two ago, there was discussion that we as a board, we would hear something and then, and then we would vote on at the follow-up meeting because we're going to go down to one meeting a month instead of two. Um, if, if, if we stayed with that plan, it could be three months from the time that it was discussed.
Well, that's trustee request. Trustee request. Right. Yeah. There might be some things that could be put on the very next meeting depending on what it is, but sometimes, you know, what you're asking for takes time to research and and make sure that it's done correctly. So this is also, uh, you know, we do have the option of special meetings if we need to call one for whatever reason. Um, so that's that.
I'm just thinking one's gonna be a very, very long
Yep.
night.
But I think, I think maybe not as bad as you think, because I think that the giving so much time for everyone to be prepared and then for the board to do their due diligence and asking their questions that we won't waste as much time up here talking about things and asking questions and debating it or, you know, um, and I guess that would be the expectation of everyone is that um, when the agenda comes out, you look at it and you get your, your questions to staff right away so that, that we don't spend hours up here talking about things.
You also have the citizens to take into place if you got a real long list here.
They can watch from home in the comfort of their couch.
Although they're gonna be up here at the microphone.
All right. So I'm going to make a motion to uh, change the uh, village board meetings to the first Tuesday of every month at six P M. Starting, when did I say that was? In August. So the very first meeting um, would be August fifth.
Oh, second.
Will it stay at six P M?
Yep. Yeah, it's six P M. So Bueker in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Me.
Okay. Great. Number eight trustee comments, reports and requests, eight point one, public safety update, trustee Hopkins.
Not much to talk about. Uh, we're trying to set up a long-term or a meeting with uh, uh, Salem uh, grade school, Riverview grade school, and we are going to invite the Cheever Wilmont grade school uh, to a conversation on the SRO concept that we uh, mentioned earlier this year. That's it.
That, I found that very interesting, Bill. Uh, can you tell us what that, what the concept was?
Yeah. So the school resource officer, much like you see your high schools, um, where they place a uh, deputy sheriff in the school itself. Uh, there is a curricula they have um, where they go around uh, to the classes in the high schools and they'll talk about uh, sexting, they'll talk about internet use, what you should and shouldn't do. Um, and taking that down one additional layer to the grade schools. Um, so we can get the grade schools uh, more involved with what's happening in the community. Uh, the earlier some of our kids learn about the internet, its use, uh, it's not so good use. Um, the uh, uh, cars driving around, at least in my neighborhood, there's a lot of kids that walk from school home. Um, and so forth. What happens if a car starts to slow down? I also have a young son who is now a uh, teacher at Wilmont, who did the unthinkable when a car stopped and asked for directions and guy says, well, can you show me? He got in the car. Now luckily, it was innocent enough, but imagine what happens if it weren't. I think the more we can educate our younger kids, uh, the better off all of us will be. So that's the intent. Um, the other concept to this was uh, the grade schools would pick up nine months out of the year under their budget. The three remaining months, the village would foot the bill. Uh, that comes to about forty-four thousand dollars per deputy. Uh, so times three, you're looking at about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which isn't even the cost of one full-time deputy year round, fully uh, funded. So we get three. And with that said and done, we can actually have uh, twenty-four, seven protection during the summer months, our busiest months uh, here in the village and so forth. So that's where that's coming.
Thanks.
So it's different than an officer-friendly program that we used to have or still have? I don't know.
They'll still have deputy friendly, but it'll be more on-site by those deputies. And I will tell you also that the deputies that you see in the high schools, uh, they're not just a deputy that uh, they selected. It's deputies who have submitted application that they want to be an SRO. They go through a screening and interview process with the uh, higher echelon at the sheriff's department. And then they go to school to learn that concept of being an SRO. So it's not just someone off the street, one of the deputies off the street that they're gonna plug in there.
So, yeah, I know there's, I know the first one, Dave Beth, I believe was the first officer deputy friend. It's the first one I've known. Um, so you're talking one in every grade school?
One in the three grade schools that are in the uh, village of Salem.
So you got three extra people?
Yes.
And then during the summer, we're gonna have three extra people on?
That is correct.
Wow.
However, during the summer, if I remember right from you said before, Bill, because school wouldn't be in session, that'd be more officers in there.
This is not a open, I'm just letting you guys all go. This is not good. This is not a uh, open uh, discussion. Sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, eight point two, southeastern Wisconsin Fax River Commission update, trustee Hopkins. Thank you, Sarah.
Lisa?
You are. Southeast Wisconsin Fax River Commission.
We have a meeting this coming Friday. One o'clock in Big Ben.
Okay. Great. Eight point three, Lake District update. Um, trustee Gant, anything on Silver Lake?
Uh, I talked to Jim Piererton, the uh, president of the association. Um, bo- boarding is in full, full, full force here now. Okay, they doubled their uh, enforcement with the sheriff department instead of one from last year, they're going to two on Saturdays and Sundays. Um, so that's all they have saying.
Okay. Great. Dennis, anything on Volts Lake or Camp in Center Lake?
Well, Volts Lake, uh, they actually, on the nineteenth, they'll be uh, treating their navigation lanes. And uh, I know people have asked, well, how we use a chemical uh, when you put it in the water, how it disperses. Well, actually, they put uh, an ingredient with it that makes it stay together like a uh, a caro syrup or something and so that it stays together and goes to the bottom. I do have a picture of Brian, can put it up there. This is uh, this is chemical treatment that was on Camp Lake. And you see the red areas? The, what, what the requirement is, is that uh, the applicator has to inspect the lake first of all and determine where they're going to treat. And then they select the chemical and all that is forwarded to the D N R for approval. And, and these are the areas that had uration water milk foil and uh, on Camp Lake and those are the areas that were treated. And as I mentioned, because and there's Center Lake on top and that's what was treated there. And uh, as I mentioned, because it's got that substance in the chemical, it stays in place and uh, and goes to the root and affects that predictor's uh, species of plant. Uh, thank you.
Great. Okay. Library board update.
Uh, we have nothing for this month, but last month they were choosing officers, but I had to come back here, so.
You got chosen?
Yeah.
Okay. Eight point five trustee announcements and agenda item requests, Mr. Gant.
Nothing.
Mr. Hopkins?
I'd like to see the uh, ATV, U T V be put on the uh, next agenda item. Our next meeting's agenda, please.
Seven, eight.
Yep.
Dennis?
At one of our uh, workshop meetings, you had mentioned that uh, Amanda and I worked together to uh, Angela, I'm sorry, to uh, no wonder I didn't to uh, set a date to have a uh, a forum for all the lake associations and lake districts in January and February. And I just want, whenever it's appropriate at that time. So we can all get together and talk about things that uh, have happened during the year and the types of vegetation and those types of things. So I just wanted to say that's something we'll put on your agenda.
Yes. Um, I'll add it to October.
That'd be good. On some Saturday in January or February.
Okay. 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 Mr. Poli?
Uh, yes. Uh, I'd like to uh, have an item for discussion and possible action um, related to a parcel in Wilmont or um, to direct staff to perform a review of requirements and funding necessary to acquire a pin number seven zero dash four dash one two zero dash three zero three dash zero nine two six uh, for development into a parking lot.
Can you email me that, please?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll send it to you.
Three oh three oh nine two six?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else?
Not, not for me. Thank you.
Angela?
Nothing.
Billy? Okay. All right, we'll move on to number twelve, fire department. Discussion and possible action on the following, twelve point one, purchase of turnout gear from Conway Shield in the amount of thirteen thousand five hundred twenty-three dollars.
Good evening, board. Thank you for hearing me out tonight. Uh, first and foremost, I, I wish to apologize and uh, for any inconsistency or a failure in communicating properly to you, Madam President, or the board with regard to what's taking place with Dust Fest. That falls on us and uh, I assure you that we're gonna correct any communication regarding that issue. There's more to be said about that. Um, I've come before you tonight to ask authorization to spend thirteen thousand dollars and change on four sets of firefighting turnout gear. Earlier this evening, I gave you a cost breakdown of what a typical firefighter costs to operate it to enter a structured fire. Allow me to introduce one of our firefighters. This is Brian Nielsen. Um, he's a good-looking dude, but you can't tell right now because he's got this thing on. So with your permission, I'd like to give you just a very brief demonstration of what it costs to enter a structure fire, much like you see Brian here. Starting with the top, uh, a typical fire helmet such as Brian's wearing, you can start peeling it off, is uh, roughly four hundred dollars and change depending on what you get. It's made out of polycarbonate and it meets NFPA standard seventeen oh one. All of the ensemble meets current NFPA standards, National Fire Protection Association uh, standard on safety. Uh, there's options on other types of helmets, but the ones that's issued by the department is something very much like that. Next thing you'll see is a, you put that down, right? The next thing you'll see is a full, what we call an SCBA or self-contained, self-contained breathing apparatus. And that's the device that we use when we enter a, a toxic environment to breathe through. You'll see a face piece here and a take on his back. The entire ensemble is roughly eight thousand dollars just for the pack itself. You can peel that off as well. Uh, new units are eighty-five hundred to ten thousand dollars each. They're very costly. They have a shelf life of approximately five to 10 years depending on how they surface out, how they get uh, uh, maintained and hydro, hydro testing of the tanks and the other equipment. You see Brian's a good-looking guy. The next thing that Brian has on is a hood. It's a nomex hood that protects his ears and his head from heat and temperatures. That device is roughly about, I think they're thirty-five dollars. You can take that off. The purpose of why we're here is to discuss turnout gear. The coat that Brian is wearing is eighteen hundred ninety-five dollars per coat, which brings up the cost of what we're asking for. The coat is, the coat is multi uh, layered. It has an outside heat shell, reflective equipment on it and inside vapor barrier. Um, Brian's been in the back room for probably fifteen or twenty minutes uh, warming up, so you can tell the coat is holding vapors in. That coat itself is eighteen hundred dollars. You notice that he's taking a radio off. Uh, typically the cost of a two-band radio is anywhere from fifteen hundred dollars up. We now have three-band radios that are thirty-five hundred dollars each.
Chief, I got a question for you.
Sure.
Jumping back to the coat real quick, uh, when you go to a uh, scene, whether it's a a vehicle accident, whether it's a, a fire, whether it's an industrial incident where you have to go in. Uh, when you guys come out and before you use that turnout gear for your next event, I'll use that term, uh, what do you do with it? Do you not clean them?
Yes. Anytime that the coat becomes what we would consider contaminated by a product, and everything from bloodborne pathogens, say in a car crash or something like that, blood and, and fluids to toxic environments such as what you're referring to, uh, they have to be decontaminated, cleaned. Uh, soot, products of combustion, uh, all kinds of nasty things tend to accumulate in the coats. Part of what the expense is, is that we try to have all of our firefighters have two sets of gears so that they're not down during that time. Takes a little bit of time to wash them and dry them and getting back in service. So that's part of why we're bearing this type of a cost. Okay? Then answer the question.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, the radio you'll see, like I said, is anywhere eighteen hundred to three thousand dollars each. The radio strap and holder is another hundred and sixty dollars. Next comes the turnout, what we call turnout pants or bunker pants. Again, fourteen hundred seventy-five dollars uh, each. The boots that he wears, Brian has leather boots on, which are an option for the firefighter, uh, anywhere from three hundred and seventy-five dollars to five hundred dollars a set of leather boots. Yeah, very effective, very comfortable, but again, very costly. Roughly, if you look at the entire ensemble on the radio, uh, the, the flashlight, anywhere from seventy-five to a hundred and fifty dollars each. So if you look at the cost breakdown of a typical entry-level firefighter, and that's every firefighter that goes into a structure fire, you're looking at approximately fourteen thousand dollars. So and that's before training, that's before education, that's before uniforms and the other things that it costs to operate a firefighter. And so the only purpose of this was to give you kind of an idea of why things are so expensive. And so the only purpose of this was to give you kind of an idea of why things are so expensive. And these are all current costs, and these are things that we have to bear on a regular basis. Again, two sets of gear for all of our full-timers and the majority of our part-timers. Questions on, um, the ask?
Does that come out of your budget, or we have to fund that out of ours?
That is Fire Department funded.
Thank you for explaining that because I do often wonder why this is on here again. So that makes sense. Anything else? All right, great. Thank you, Brian. At least he didn't make you play poker.
Brian, thanks very much. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
He's gonna pull that stuff back on now.
Yeah, that was really informative. Over the years, we've had these, uh, purchases come through, and I've often wondered, I, I know it's expensive, but I've never really seen it, so thank you.
Um, when we come back for fire trucks, we're probably going to keep those outside the building. The same.
It's good.
Right outside.
Great, I appreciate that.
So are you looking for one set tonight?
Now, this, this is for four sets.
Okay.
Again, it's just the coat and the pants, not the rest of the ensemble. It's just hopefully explaining why some of these things are so costly.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase from Conway Shield of, uh, thirteen thousand five hundred and twenty-three dollars.
I'll second.
Oh, I have Brooks on that one. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, anyone opposed? Great.
Thank you, Board.
Twelve point two, baby box update? You're not done yet.
We had originally, uh, scheduled our official unveiling for today. Unfortunately, some of the folks that were very, um, instrumental in getting the, the box ready to go were unavailable to be here, so we're rescheduling the box. We're super excited. We want to get that unveiled, and we want to get it into operation. But in, in respect and deference to the folks that have put so much effort into it, we would like to reschedule that. But it is mere moments from ready to go.
Okay, when you get that date, can you let us know?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Thank you. Okay.
Further, that's it?
That's it.
Thank you, Board.
All right, we'll go on to number nine, Treasurer's Office Discussion and Possible Action on the Following Items. Nine point one, Approval of Vouchers in the Amount of Four Hundred Fifty-seven Thousand Six Hundred Forty-six Dollars and Nine Cents for May twenty twenty-five. Are there any questions on the vouchers?
Is there any way, uh, and I know we've asked this in the past, and I'll give you an example. When we look at these, uh, disbursements and whatnot, um, we see such things as, uh, grounds maintenance or street lighting or utilities. Um, and it really doesn't go into that much detail. We talk about maintenance on the vehicles. It doesn't mention which vehicle. Is there any way to expand, Chris, that, uh, description field to at least put something there where we know what the cost is, that what it is we're looking at? More so for the vehicles, I.
Sure, well, so the description is the, like, the account number, so I can see if there's another report that has more information that we can put, uh, in this report for you.
Yeah, would you please, because you got multiple ones in here now for, uh, vehicle repairs and upgrades and I have no clue which vehicle.
Yeah, I can look into that for you.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
In fact, I did have one. I tried calling and I, I just couldn't get through here, but, uh, it was, it's called Grease Incorporated. Vehicle equipment, uh, thirteen hundred dollars, and I just wondered if, and you probably don't know right offhand, and maybe I'll get back to you later on, unless you do know what.
No, I don't know offhand. I can get back to you on that one.
Thanks. I, I didn't know if it was decals or just what it is for thirteen hundred bucks, vehicle equipment. And it's, I can give you the check number if you want. Seven four six seven nine.
Seven four six seven nine, okay.
It's on page three.
Any other questions?
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, four hundred, how much is it, four hundred fifty-seven thousand six hundred and forty-six dollars and nine cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed? Nine point two, Expense Report Through May Twenty Twenty-Five.
Uh, so you should have this report in front of you as well. Uh, so through, so five twelve for the year through May is forty-one point six seven percent. Uh, in our current, uh, budget percentage, we spent is twenty-nine point four one. Uh, doing pretty well there compared to last year through May was thirty-two point three. Uh, so we're spending, uh, under the, uh, where we were last year as well.
Any questions on that? All right. Thank you.
Well, I just have one more thing while, while I'm up here regarding the email to a couple of businesses that we got.
Oh, yes.
Just to kind of
Right.
get this out there again, that an email went out asking for payment, uh, from a couple of businesses. Uh, so if businesses or residents get any email asking for a wire from Village of Salem Lakes, that's a scam that's going around, uh, do not pay that. Any questions, please call the village directly and ask about it. But any email that you receive, if it's from us, would be at V O S L W I dot gov. Any, anything other email, uh, address is not from the village. So just wanted to get that out there.
Great.
Could you also, uh, just real quick answer, would the, would the village ever ask for money via email? Or will be sent like a, a letter?
No, yeah, we've sent a letter.
We would send a letter.
Right.
Yeah.
It'd never be a wire that we'd ask for either.
Have the emails been all consistent to all those businesses? Is it the same email?
I believe it was the two businesses. I think it was the same. Was that correct?
Here's, it, it appears it, as if the businesses that were on our last planning commission meeting agenda are the ones that were targeted, so there are potentially up to four. Two of what, which we've already heard from that they did receive this request for a wire transfer. So we have already worked with, uh, the media as well as our own social media to get the information out there, but I really, uh, wanted to make sure Christopher mentioned this this evening, so an even wider audience hears, do not pay something that you get requesting a wire transfer without first calling to confirm that we actually sent that to you. Because this is a phishing scam, and we do not want our residents to pay something that they should not be paying.
I'll make a motion to approve the expenditure report.
Do we have to make a motion to approve it? It's just a, it's an update, right?
Yeah, I think it's just an update.
Oh, all right.
It's just an update. No, not actually needed. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, number ten, Clerk's Office Discussion and Possible Action on the Following. Ten point one, Approval of Minutes from June second, twenty twenty-five Village Board Meeting. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, anyone opposed? Approval of Minutes from the June second, twenty twenty-five Village Board Special Meeting. I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Uker and Polly, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi, anyone opposed? Ten point two, Approval of Applications Filed with the Clerk for Retail Licenses to Sell Fermented Malt Beverages and Intoxicating Liquors in accordance with the provisions of Chapter one twenty-five point zero four of the Wisconsin State Statutes and the following, with approval contingent on background check clearance, completion of beverage server, server class, and payment of the necessary fees as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Hopkins and favor? I guess I just wonder if we can do them all at once, Ramsey, or do we need to separate the classes out? Okay, great, then we're good. All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi, anyone opposed?
No. I'm sorry. Hi.
Okay. Okay. Uh, ten point three, Approval of Applications Filed with the Clerk for a Cabaret License Contingent Upon Payment of the Necessary Fees as Presented. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, anyone opposed? Ten point four, Approval of Applications Filed with the Clerk for an Amusement License, Amusement Machine License Contingent Upon Payment of the Necessary Fees as Presented.
So moved.
Second.
Hopkins in favor? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, anyone opposed? Ten point five, Approval of Applications Filed with the Clerk for a Cigarette Tobacco License with Approval Contingent on Background Check Clearance and Payment of the Necessary Fees as Presented.
So moved.
Second.
Hopkins and Brooks? All in favor? Hi, anyone opposed? Number eleven, Public Works Discussion and Possible Action on the Following, eleven point one. Resolution twenty twenty-five point zero six dash one two nine, Approving the Utility District's Twenty Twenty-four Compliance Maintenance Annual Report.
Uh, attached for your review and consideration is a resolution confirm, confirming and approving the twenty twenty-four Compliance Maintenance Annual Report. The last page of the report is a summary of the scoring for each section. The utility district scored an A in all sections. My recommendations for approval of the resolution confirming and approving the twenty twenty-four Village of Salem Lakes Utility District Compliance Maintenance Annual Report. I did have enough credits, Peter.
Oh, hey, it's sorry. What was the question?
No, I just said I did have enough credits this time.
Oh, good. That's perfect. Thank you.
And there is one section I need to fill in, Collection Systems, Section five point four, there's an account balance missing. That as far as sewer system evaluation study and INI reduction, that account balance is one million two hundred forty-five thousand two hundred nineteen dollars and fifty-seven cents. Any questions?
So moved.
I'll second it.
All right, Hopkins and Gant, any other additional comments or questions?
Yeah, one question. Brad, isn't this the one where we always had one item that fell out of uh, parameter, was it phosphate, maybe?
Phosphate is the famous one.
Yeah, but it's in.
We're in.
Wow.
Makes Dennis smile.
Hundred on that one as well.
We got an A. Which means no violations.
Good done. That's great to hear. All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi, anyone opposed? Eleven point two, Change Order Number One in the Amount of Fifty-eight thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars and Payment Request Number One in the Amount of One Hundred Three Thousand Five Hundred Fourteen Dollars and Ninety-five Cents for Twenty Twenty-five Utilities and Roadway Project.
Encloses project payment number one for the twenty twenty-five Siren Utility Improvements Program in the amount of one hundred three thousand five hundred fourteen dollars ninety-five cents. It includes actually two change orders that we combined into one. One was for the State Trunk Highway eighty-three emergency repairs that I brought up at the last meeting. That was in the amount of thirty-eight thousand five hundred twenty-five. And a hundred twenty-second street, there is also a change order involved in that construction. The hundred twenty-second street, uh, contains excavation insulation of all fall rip rap, installation of mainline drainage pipe and structures. The contractor performed change order work to relay a portion of the first run of drainage system due to conflicts with existing sanitary sewer main. The contractor performed change order work to lower the sanitary sewer riser that was in conflict with the proposed drainage also. Um, so this, to date, we will be seven percent complete. My recommendations for approval of the change order and payment request number one in the amount of one hundred three thousand five hundred fourteen dollars and ninety-five cents.
I'll make a motion to approve those. Expenditures, the change.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, anyone opposed? Eleven point three, Lift Stations Two Zero One, Two Zero Three, and Two Zero Eight Reconstruction and Options to Fund, Ari Smith and Ellers' Presentations.
Hi, good evening. My name is Brandon Foss. I work with Ari Smith, uh, lift station expert, but I work with Dave. Uh, I'm here to talk about the scope of the, uh, upcoming project, the reconstruction of the, uh, existing sanitary lift stations, number two oh one, two oh three, and two oh eight. Two oh one and two oh three are reconstructions, and two oh eight is the replacement of two, uh, frozen twelve-inch valves. The current two lift stations to be reconstructed, again, two oh one and two oh three, uh, that design, uh, is it exists and includes a, uh, as it exists now on the ground, it's a buried steel chamber. But houses the pumps, the piping and the valves down in there. The lower chamber, chamber is defined as a confined space, and it presents safety concerns for the staff. In addition, from an operational standpoint, it is more difficult to operate and maintain these types of stations with the equipment below, below the grade in a small space. Uh, back when these were put in, these stations are now forty-six years old. When they were put in, they were state-of-the-art. I mean, that was really a cool design back then, the flood and suction type, but, but no longer is. As part of the current project, um, these stations will be upgraded to include, uh, submersible pumps instead of flooded suction with the reuse of the concrete wet well, and will also include the installation of two new emergency backup generators. Um, pictures are up there of the current station. Uh, that's down in the chamber, that one right there. So when you stand in that chamber, I don't know the exact diameter, but it's not much. It might be six, seven feet, so you're very close when you're standing from front of the panel, and when you turn, you're in front of the pumps. Yeah, Brian, can you just keep paging through? There's a, there's a pump there, a flooded suction pump down in the, down in the, uh, chamber. Control panel. That's a shot looking straight down from the top, so standing on the ground looking straight down. Confined space entry, um, you would tie off with a tripod and, and safety climbing equipment at the top, and then work your way down that ladder. I, I believe that tube is about three feet in diameter, and you work your way down that tube and into the, uh, into the chamber below. The chamber below is thicker than the tube is, and then the tube is, the top hatch is lockable. Just another picture. And then Brian, can you put up, uh, that side PDF, uh, file, please? Thank you. Uh, I may or may not talk about for this. This is the drawing from nineteen seventy-nine. That's the, the side section drawing of the existing lift station. I believe that's lift station number two oh three. Well, actually, I will quit just to get you a tour. This is in this wet well here. Oh, thank you. This is the wet well where the sewage is in. This is where the sewage comes in and drops down into the wet well. It sets off a series of level control, which is, it floats, so it's a float that tips just like your some crack in your house, and it flips. And then when that turns on, the pump turns on, grabs that sewage right out of this pipe right here, grabs that sewage and forces it, thus the force main, it forces up and sends it whatever distance it needs to go to go to the next gravity sewer and work its way to the wastewater plant. So this is the structure, this concrete that we are reusing. Um, there's going to be submersible pumps. This is a flooded suction pump, but there'll be a submersible pump in here that actually sits in the sewage. And then this, uh, structure here will, will be abandoned. It'll be probably, we haven't talked about it yet in, in complete detail, but it'll probably be cut off three feet below ground. Be some holes punched in it, be filled full of gravel and abandoned on the ground after salvaging whatever needs to come out of it. So that's your existing, that's your existing structure. Um, what I want to talk about is the benefits and advantages of the above-ground valve vault. So again, currently, your valves are down in the chamber, and the pre-release, the pre, I'm sorry, can't speak. The pre-release, you have, you have nine of these smaller lift stations within the village, and previous of the seven of the nine were built the same way. These last two ones, two oh one and two oh three, the last two to go. So the, item number one, the benefits, safety. Below-ground vaults require confined space entry, and that requires by protocol, three staff members to enter. Above-ground vaults avoid the need for confined space, confined space entry, requiring only one staff member. Eliminating the need for confined space entry into the underground vaults significantly, significantly reduces the risk of accidents and injuries. Two, electrical. Your current stations are two hundred and forty volt, but your new stations are going to be four, four hundred and eighty volt. It's a, it's a better power. It's a, it's a, you get a better efficiency within your motor. The four hundred and eighty volt electrical panels uh, are protected within the utility building, and then access to those panels during inclement weather, it makes everyone feel safer and happier, so. I'm not a strong electrical person, but I've been doing it my whole career as far as pumps, but not the electrical side. Number three, accessibility. Above-ground vaults allow for easy inspection, maintenance, and repair of valves and other equipment. By providing easy access, above-ground vaults reduce the time and cost associated with maintenance and repair trips. Also, the bypass piping is accessible and operable, easier done. So these stations, all your existing ones, your, your existing one, the way it sits now, and the way it's going to be replaced, does have a bypass line on it. So if you had like a lightning strike at that plant, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, at that lift station. And it was uh inoperable. There's different ways you can configure it, but operating the valves would be up on top. There'd be a pipe that you can tie into. And either pump out into the force main with a, with a pump on the ground. Or if the pumps are still working, but the force mains broken, you can pump into a truck and vice versa. So it's, it gives you some flexibility. And item number four, dry versus damp, I called it. Um. Below ground vaults are damp and and wet. There's no way around it. They're sometimes located in the high groundwater table and they're sometimes flooded. It's real unfortunate as an engineer, when I look down a vault, but there's, there's no way around it. They develop leaks, they develop condensation. And when we need to get into it, the first thing I gotta do is pump it out. Um, above ground vaults are heated, insulated and dry, which results in less corrosion and maintenance and therefore longer lasting equipment. Final comments for me, um, above ground vaults have become very common throughout the Wisconsin, United States due to changing regulations and codes. I already talked about your existing stations in Salem. Again, there's nine of these. I call them the smaller types stations. And seven have been completed to the style today and two left to go. One last, it's just a comment. Um, I'm gonna turn this over to Todd. He's your financial advisor. Lift station prices in about the last uh six years have roughly doubled. So with deflation, we saw the last five, six years. Um, really unfortunate, but the prices have about doubled. So it's a very expensive, critical piece of infrastructure. With that, I'll take any questions now. And then if not, I'll turn it over to Todd, who's your financial advisor to talk about funding options.
Um, yeah, you had talked about the, the valves going into a building. Um, there are. All three locations, just had two locations uh having generator inside of a house or the standard generator like on a.
So, yep, uh, the existing, you have existing houses there right now, utility buildings, and that building is going to be reused and the general will go in inside that building existing. So at the stations will be two buildings, one existing with the generator in it. And one new one with the valves in it.
Did uh, the generators, since now you're going to four eighty, did you say?
Yes, sir.
So they're bigger generators than you have to have, right?
Yeah, but they still fit in the building, but they're a little bit bigger. The pump horsepower is staying the same. Roughly.
And then you have to. Is there enough power outside to bring it? Cause generally it's a. A regular electric company power, right? So they have to put another transformer or something on.
So the general will be, will we run off a natural gas?
Power? Yeah, but I mean, you, that's only for emergency then, right?
Correct.
But you run off the regular power off.
Correct, yes, sir.
Do they have to update all that stuff too?
No, we are, we running through, we're running through uh your power company and talking about where they have to pull power from to get that done, but it's, it's, I consider it fairly minor. Most of the project, so. It does, it's not coming from a far, far long ways away, so.
And I'm guessing neither one of these locations have the ability for a secondary electric feed, which could uh eliminate the need for a generator. In other words, um, you can have two separate transformers, two separate feed lines.
That is allowed by the D N R is one way to go around the emergency power answer is to do that. I don't know if that's possible here or not, though. You'd have to have two separate crossing independent lines, so, yep. Any other questions for me? With that, I'll turn it over to Todd.
So my name is Todd Taves. I'm with uh Ellers. And I was gonna say, it's been a long time since the villages borrowed money. So I recognize Dennis. Um, I think it was when we did the financing for uh tid number one. So um, our role is so we're independent, we represent you. Our job is to get you the money at the cheapest rate possible. And historically. With a clean, you've got um. Clean water fund loan financing that's been available in the past to fund sewer projects. And that pot of money for many years was basically unlimited. So if you're. Project qualified, uh, you receive funding and the attractive benefit of that is the interest rate again for qualifying projects is fifty five percent of whatever the market rate is at the time. So most of the debt on your books associated with uh the sewer utility is clean water fund loan financing. However, uh, for the first time in the program's history, uh, in the past funding cycle and in the current funding cycle. Uh, there has not been enough money to go around. Uh, so it's now become competitive and your application, which your engineers submitted on your behalf. Uh, did not reach the funding threshold. Uh, so in other words, you, you submitted. Uh, you're in the pipeline. However, there's not enough money uh to get down to the level where your project is funded. So what are our options? Um, the legislature, as they're going through the budget process right now. Is talking about increasing the bonding authority for the state. It's unknown what will pass, uh, when those funds might be available, if they would be used to go back and retroactively fund projects. Uh, that didn't meet the funding list. Um, if your project could be resubmitted, would it become eligible? So a lot of unknowns right now. So a couple of options that I outlined in the uh brief memo. Uh, one would be you could uh go out and get interim financing. So we go to a bank. Uh, most likely we secure a line of credit. And you draw down on the funds as you need them to pay the bills as the project proceeds. In the meantime, you wait for uh the situation to develop as far as the funding at the state level. Uh, more information on whether you could reapply if the project will remain eligible. And then if you are successful in securing that clean water fund loan financing, you would use that to repay that short term. A loan that interim financing. Uh, only disadvantage of that is again, it's an unknown. Uh, if you were not able to get clean water fund loan financing, you'd have to go to the market then and take that out. Uh, with the conventional option. Uh, we know what interest rates are now. We don't know where they would be in six months, twelve months, eighteen months. So you've got some interest rate risk there. Uh, the other option would be simply to go to the market now and lock in long term. And I put a table on the second page of the memorandum. So this isn't intended as a detailed financing plan to just sort of give you a degree of magnitude differential. So the first line, uh, the clean water fund loan, and again, this money is not available at the present time. Uh, that has an interest rate of two point four seven five percent. Over a twenty year term of financing that equates to about a hundred twenty six thousand a year. Uh, over that twenty year term. Couple other options you would, or the primary options you would have if you wanted to see permanent financing now. Would be to issue a general obligation note. And what that means is that the, the village would be. Uh, securing it with a pledge of the tax levy. However, you would actually use the sewer utility revenue in order to pay the debt service. This is very similar to what we did. Uh, with tid number one where it's general obligation debt, but you don't actually levy the tax because you use the tid revenue. And the advantage of uh the general obligation debt as compared to the next option I'll talk about is investors see that as a more secure. Uh, form of pledge. So it has an interest rate in the current market, and I'm being somewhat conservative here of about four and a quarter. So about a hundred and fifty two thousand a year. The last thing is you could issue a sewer system revenue bond. That's essentially what a clean water fund loan is. However, you'd be securing that financing in the open market. And this has a higher interest rate at roughly four point seven five or a hundred and seventy five thousand a year. And that's simply because as compared to general obligation. It's a, it's a lesser credit. So investors are relying on the performance of the sewer system. Uh, it's also uh a bit more expensive in terms of cost of issuance. And customarily, you also need to fund a debt service reserve, uh, which unless you have the cash on hand, gets added into the amount that you're financing. So I don't think that's really a practical option, but I just wanted to you to have that as a basis of comparison. So I think your, you know, your most realistic options, if you wanna again, hold open that possibility of. Clean water fund loan financing, knowing that there's no assurance you'll get it. Uh, we could simply go out and get the money again on a short term basis. Uh, if you prefer to not worry about that or or accept that risk, I would recommend you look at issuing a general obligation note. Uh, the village has a plenty of statutory capacity to do that. Uh, the user rates in the sewer utility at the moment are more than sufficient to cover the anticipated debt payments. Uh, and that will be your lowest cost to capital, uh, assuming that you are not ultimately able to get the clean water fund loan financing. So that's uh kind of a. In a nutshell, uh, the way I'm seeing this in terms of what your options are to fund the, fund the project if you wish to proceed with it.
So question for you. We potentially have another sewer project. In the coming years, okay, if not sooner. If the clean water fund loan is not available today. But later on it becomes available. Can we take the two projects, merge them together under one? Loan? For the clean water fund?
You're talking about prospect, not these projects, prospective projects.
We take out the lifts, we, we take a short term.
Yep.
Uh, general obligation promissory note now. For the lift stations.
Mm-hmm.
And later on, we're ready to go to fund. The other uh sanitary sewer project.
Yeah.
Can we take those two into one for the clean water fund at a lower interest rate?
So the, the project that I'm not sure a project you're referring to, is there an I T A in for that one? Yes, okay. Um, so they're, they're treated as separate applications. So again, you have an application in the pipeline for this lift station. What we, we don't know at this point in time is if that will, will ever be funded. Uh, so it, it wouldn't be a matter of combining that, that other project will have to stand on its own uh through the process. Thank you.
What is?
Each one of these stations, just small parts?
Possibly, possibly.
I want to make sure I understand correctly. So this uh general. Obligation promissory note, you're saying that. That would be a loan and then we would levy taxes?
So this, the security is a pledge by the village to levy the taxes. However, if you have another revenue source available, uh, you're, you're gonna take those funds and you're gonna essentially offset what you would have. To otherwise levy, and that's what you would do in this case with the sewer revenues.
Okay, and that's a twenty year obligation?
I use that simply because you, that's the maximum statutory term that you can go out on a general obligation. And normally you. Um, you know, you fund things over their useful life. In this case, you know, a lift station is going to have more than a twenty year useful life, so we would go out as long as we can.
And forgive me for being naive, is. Is something that can be refinanced or something if we do get money and we're paid off early?
So if we went to a market with a general obligation promissory note and assuming we sold it in the public markets. A twenty year term, you customarily uh have no prepayment privileges for like the first eight years. Uh, and then usually an eighth, ninth, sometimes the tenth year uh is when you can then uh any date thereafter prepay. Uh, in full or in part or refinance.
Okay, thank you.
So we're looking at. Quite a bit of money here. Sorry, I'm trying to do the math in my. May two hundred and fifty thousand, right?
Yep.
Dollars. Um, is this something that has to be funded tonight? Because I guess I would have liked to seen all these options on a piece of paper instead of. It's, it's hard to remember what option one was, option two was, option three was.
That was in, in the memo.
Oh, it was?
Yep.
Did I miss that part? I apologize. I'm going to.
And I, I would also say that um.
Page eighty.
You know, if, if, if you, whatever you do, you're going to have some sort of formal action you would need to take. So this is a. A matter of information. I think certainly probably the staff would. Appreciate some guidance if, if there's a consensus, but yes, this is not to be acted on.
So I guess the question I have is maybe for Brad. Um, uh, the appropriate to, to do that now in regards to um. The, so tonight's just a re, just a review where things are at. Right?
Yeah, I guess I did see this in there, but it didn't have as much. Information as what you just gave with all of the options. And I guess that's what I was looking for. So these will need to be funded at some point and. No, I was just thinking of maybe just having it for the next meeting where we could have a little bit more of that um. Detail on the funding options to make a decision instead of what's in this little tiny chart that didn't really. Explain all of that part.
Certainly. Do, one more question out of curiosity. Do we know how much that would cost in taxes per household?
To levy?
Sewer fund. Now, this one's other sewer, sewer fund.
Okay, this is where I'm.
User fees and all that, that's what funds the whole. The whole sewer.
Okay, thank you. I'm still learning. Thanks for.
Brad, um. Are these? Have to be done now?
Brad, can you go to the microphone?
We can't. Oh, yeah, I can hear him. We can't space these out over a couple of years.
No, actually the generator over at lift station one is out of service. It's been out of service for. Quite a few months now. We cannot find parts for it. It's obsolete. Silver forty years old.
The other two are still working though?
The other one.
The other one?
Kind of.
Three stations?
Yeah, but one's only.
Well, there's only two that we're rebuilding totally.
Oh, okay.
Both of them, their generators are forty plus years old. The one has a starter that does not work. They said they could try to rebuild it, but it's no guarantee. And we can't find that starter anywhere. Uh, we've already, as we've been rebuilding them, we've been taking the generators and putting them in storage. We've stole every starter. That we've had and reused it somewhere else.
That's good. Always have parts.
So the only question I had is, is it during budget time, we, there are like three options for each one of these lift stations? And so then we. Plan for in October of twenty four. Uh, for the, I guess you'd call it the most expensive case scenario, which is what this particular program is. And I know we had also talked about trying to put together a public works committee to review some options. Um, and as well as, I believe in two thousand twenty three. Maybe it was really twenty four, there was some discussion about, I think it was either two oh one or two oh three. Having any items projecting above the ground and some setback issues and. How, how was that resolved to allow us to, I guess, maintain this plan that we're talking about tonight?
I believe we have resolved those issues. The one building will be in uh right away.
So it falls outside of the scope of the.
As odd as that sounds, yeah, if you're in the right way, you don't need a setback.
Sure.
If you're outside, then you do.
And, and that takes care of all of it. There was another structure I thought that was uh not covered by the right away placement and um would then require a variance.
I believe all the setbacks were. Were looked at. Yeah, they. And all stranded looked at him at one time.
Right. And then we'd had that meeting where it turned out that maybe we would have to go subgrade due to.
Yeah, we double checked into that one.
The total amount we need here is approximately two million dollars?
Two to two and a half, I would say.
I don't recall hearing um the number of staff required for confined space entry versus the above grade. Did you, did you talk about that? Okay, I'm sorry.
That was mentioned. At a minimum, you need three people to do a confined space entry. And those will typically come at one o'clock in the morning. When you have to wake up three people, have them come in and then that one person that's there.
Why is?
In, in five minutes, he's gonna wait thirty minutes for the other people to get there.
Why do you need three?
That's by a stakehold, stakehold. OSHA.
Because it's. Got it.
Yeah, one goes down, one's the operator up on top and the other ones.
Just one person or?
Yes, you unlock a door and walk in.
That means you got a pit with a gate that you have, you lift the pumps up like, uh, I think. Over in Rock Lake is that tight? Instead of climbing down to bring the pumps up, you bring the pumps up with a crane.
You bring the pumps up from up. Top.
Fight there.
Yeah. You just hook them and pull them up.
Brad, can you also talk about um what happens when the generator doesn't work and what extra efforts we have to go through? Because if a generator goes or the electric goes down in the middle of the night, what happens?
Uh, last month, there was one day where. We would have needed the generator over at lift station one. But we did not have it. So basically we had a poor outage. We staffed at lift station for over twenty four hours pumping it out. Consist constantly. Fortunately, there wasn't a ton of rain, so the flows coming in weren't that great. But you still have to staff a sledge truck with somebody sitting there waiting for the wet well to fill up. Suck it down and then.
They don't have auxiliary generator on, on wheels. Didn't we save one of them?
We do have a auxiliary generator. We tend to try to save that up for highway fifty up lift station twenty four by the vet. Because that one. Does not have a generator and it will fill up real quick. We've had basement backups. At that lift station before.
I just thought we had another backup generator somewhere within the. A village.
Yes, we do.
And we can't make it so it can plug in there in emergencies?
Oh, it will probably cost us about eighty thousand dollars to get that plug in. Everything situated. Yeah, and then you got, then you're doing it manually also relying on people to throw switches and transfer switches.
So I have a question. Why is option A looking for two million more dollars when? So I have a question, why is option A looking for two million more dollars when I come up with two hundred and fifty thousand dollars? What's the two million?
Two million's the cost of the lift stations.
Oh, I thought one was ninety or two were ninety and one was seventy, did I miss something in that conversation?
Nine hundred and fifty thousand.
Oh, yeah.
And then seventy thousand for the valves.
Be why? Okay.
Is there anything else that we should add or be looking at too if we're going to do, go through this uh raising this money? Is there anything else that we?
At this point, we've been working on these two lift stations for going on three years now, I'd be happy just to get these done and regroup. And the next project is going to be quite a significant one if we continue with Velmar Nias. I'd, I'd rather do that one as a standalone clean project.
And you, we never know, I mean, last time we did this, we had very low interest, but we had to pay our bonds and we're done good. I thought you retired.
That's Dave.
Oh, Dave, okay. So is there a, any action we got to do on this, or is this just all information?
No, we.
If you want to give staff direction on which route you think we should go for funding, we'd appreciate it, but otherwise, no action tonight.
On one route, given how the clean water fund is not available. Otherwise, it's going to be another million. So.
Second option.
Yep.
You call it G O P N?
Just to be clear, I, I was almost going to say something when your representative was here, because that went through a joint finance committee. Todd mentioned it, so rough numbers, um, they were funding the clean water fund at forty-five million annually. And they just passed, now again, it's not done yet, it just went, I'm, I'm no legislative expert, trust me, but they, it went, it just passed at seven hundred and thirty-two million. Okay, for twenty twenty-six, so the, the budget statewide is going now for twenty twenty-six. So that's another option is, is, and I'm checking on it, because I gotta, it gets real weird with the DNR and this stuff and through the funding group, the clean water fund group. But my question was, if we bid it this year still and stay on schedule, we got to bid it, we got to get contracts, we got to get some middles, and then a generator takes about a year to get still, that, that whole thing with the things taking a while still hasn't fixed on generators, and then your panel could take like six months. So if we can get, there's no promises in this, this is where I'm way in front of my ski tips, but if we can get the project going and, and then get the submissions approved and then start the project in twenty twenty-six um with the DNR still funded with the new twenty twenty-six month monies, and I, and I can't speak anymore to that, because I don't know, and we don't know, of course, what they're going to do, you know? The, the seven thirty-two million that came out of joint finance committee, but that's not signed by the governor yet, so, but that's where that sits, just to be clear that this year, no, twenty twenty-five clean water fund is not there for these small projects, but in twenty twenty-six, we do feel it's going to be, but that's up to the governor.
So again, I come back with my question then, if we took a general obligation promissory note now and the clean water funds became available in twenty twenty-six, can we somehow refine? No, you can't.
That, that's really the, the, that's option one. We may, we may do option one as a general obligation note anyways, but it may have like a two-year term, not twenty years. So it would be, it would be taken out with the requirement that you do something with it within a period of time, and that something would either be clean water fund loan financing if it's available, or going back then and issuing the twenty-year G O note. Okay, it, it's, it's really, I think, comes down to is whether or not you want to hold open that possibility of potentially securing clean water fund loan financing, again, there's no assurance. Uh, and again, the only downside is, is, is you're accepting interest rate risk, because you're going to have to lock into something maybe two years from now instead of today, I mean, who knows, rates could be percent lower than they are now, they could be eight percent, we just have no way of knowing.
And Brad, from a, from a current position, you don't recommend waiting until twenty twenty-six to move on this, do you?
Not for this project, it would make perfect sense for Velmar Nias.
Okay.
Uh, we don't know if that funding is going to be there or what they will do, I, I mean, if we secure funding, it might be tough for the state to say, oh, you already funded the project, but now we're going to refund it for you, it, you know, they're going to want their money if, if we already found money elsewhere.
But if we took a short-term loan out, the possibility exists, we can try and apply for it, for this project.
Yeah, I mean, I think you'd have to essentially apply again, right? Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So, so you'd be, you'd be applying again in the next funding cycle?
Yes. Okay.
But you still need the cash sooner than than that money's going to be available, so then again, that's option one, you go out, you secure financing, it's shorter term. When it, before it matures, you have to do something with that, either clean water fund loan if it's available, or you take a long-term.
And the risk is the interest rate.
Right, and you know, you're paying, you're, you're going to execute two transactions instead of one. So there are some, you know, additional costs to that, but in the grand scheme of things, it's really the interest rate is, is what uh drives the analysis.
So Brad, what do you need us to do tonight?
Absorb the information, give us any advice on what what direction you want us to, if you want us back next month, do you want us to put together a pa- a package with?
We have a meeting next week. Um, so if everybody wants to sit on this and maybe do some thinking on it and you have that option, otherwise we have, we make a decision tonight, I guess.
There's only one option, right?
I would agree.
So would I. I'll make a motion then to uh go with the general obligation promissory note. Let me back up.
A three, three million fifty-one four seventeen, is that what you're looking for, Bill?
Yeah, I, I, just my suggestion would be simply to, you know, uh, something along the lines of a motion to direct staff to pursue uh twenty or general obligation of for financing.
Remzi, you good with that or?
Yeah, so your motion should be a motion to approve option involving blank. And as he just said, you can fill in the blank with that verbiage, so you've got multiple options, you've been talking about them. But you can now move to isolate to the option that you like.
Okay, so when I say blank, you go.
There you go. Projects with issuance of twenty-year general obligation promissory.
Yeah, that's good. So moved. I'll second, oh, okay.
The only other thing I would say is, so this isn't something like we're going to come back in two weeks and ask you to formally approve it. So, you know, we'll, we'll need to talk about the bidding schedule, I like to wait until we actually have bids, so we can right-size the financing, and in the meantime, new information becomes available where we would feel more certain that you had a clean water fund loan path. Uh, you know, we can certainly pivot, but I think this is helpful and at least giving us a direction to start moving.
Okay.
And, and or are you approving uh for staff to further explore that option, or are you actually approving that option? I think it's the form.
We're approving the option.
You're approving the option. Then your motion has stated.
As Todd said or something, because I will just change course later. Okay.
Okay. Dennis?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Angela?
Yes.
Billy?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
I'm a yes, motion carries. Thirteen administrator discussion, possible action on the following thirteen point one to contract with Land Glass Consulting to provide a customized workshop titled Built to Win, Creating a Championship Culture Through Psychological Safety and Purpose Driven Leadership for the Village Board and the Village Leadership Team for five thousand dollars.
All right, great, thank you, so as I had told you a few months back, the village won um a grant uh for safety through the League of Insurance, League of Wisconsin Municipalities Insurance. Uh, our name was literally drawn out of a hat, and we didn't really apply for it, it was a surprise to us, it was a ten thousand dollar grant. Uh, the League of Wisconsin Insurance has to approve how that money is spent. Um, they did approve five thousand dollars for being used for the purposes of this training. Uh, the other five thousand dollars will be used for safety equipment. Um, and we don't have the exact safety equipment picked out yet, um, but that's what it would be used for. Um, the purpose of this training is uh exactly what it says, it's a way to build um team and it is also one step towards getting to your strategic planning. So by building unity and team through this training, it will help us as we go through the strategic planning effort as well. I think it would be a benefit to all of us, and I hope that by bringing it to you this evening, my goal was to get board buy-in, to participate, because there's really no point in doing it if we don't get the whole leadership team together. So it would be all of your staff as well as the board working together um through this one-day workshop. Part of the workshop prep would be a couple of different things. Um, one of the items, wrong page, there'd be a pre-session meeting with myself, then also a pre-session meeting with the village president of at least two hours, um, so that the presenter trainer can get some more information from Rita as to uh goals and outcomes that she would like to see for the board as well as staff. There would be a customized survey that would um address all staff as well as the board and gather some really good meaningful feedback to help tailor the training to what would best help the villages Salem Lakes to move forward. And then um a full day of customized training specific to our unique needs here in Salem Lakes, so that's what this is. We can, it's for safety, so it is anything having to do with safety. So uh I know the Public Works Department, Brad just stepped out. He was going to use the remaining five thousand dollars for probably signage and maybe safety harnesses, um, at least that's what we had talked about, so.
Would it be possible to, um, and maybe this isn't because it's fire department, but that turnout gear that we witnessed tonight, would that fall into the safety portion of potential use for the funds?
I believe it probably could.
So we could, I mean, just as a thought, could, could redirect it towards the tanks and gear and stuff like that that we heard about tonight? Um, and you'd, you'd have to get approval from the people who issued the prize, if you will.
Certainly.
You already had this approved through the, through this?
That's correct, it's already been approved by the league to be used for this purpose if we choose to.
But by, by approved, you, you submitted to them and they approved it, um, but you could resubmit another idea potentially and that would be an email and ask and sort of thing?
I'm trying to understand this, so it sounds to me like staff is asking for our help to, to make things easier in the village between us and we, and staff, my
Yes.
And just based on what I'm reading, this is a, a ask for help.
Correct. This is a way for us to learn how to work better and more effectively as a cohesive team to build unity, to be able to move forward, to learn how to communicate better amongst the board as well as staff. Um, the league was particularly interested in this, um, due to some of the challenges we see here in this village. So uh, you know, by, by operating as a more cohesive team, it also reduces legal liability and risk. So of course, an insurance company would like that, so, um, I I don't know what else to say.
I wonder if eight hours to me, it seems like eight hours is a lot, especially in one day, I presume this could be broken up over multiple days? Or not?
Any trainer that you bring in is going to have to travel, so it would be better to have it in one day so that you're not paying travel and hotel fees.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Can you give an example of the psychological safety, what is that? Exactly, like, can you just give some examples on that?
Sure, um, I'm going to try to choose my words carefully. So psychological safety is where you try to create a culture of uh team unity where people enjoy coming to work, uh, the board enjoys working with us, where you feel safe, safe to communicate both directions. Um, where expectations are clearly defined. Um, and, and that goes to anything that we do, anything that you do, uh, so that there's two-way communication that's very productive. Um, and we don't have missteps along the way.
Well, and, and I think too along those lines, like got a lot of expenditures, we just talked about the lift stations, I know that that's maintenance fund and different um uh budgets running um a little bit closer to um what was projected instead of being um overly beefed up and, and plenty of leftover, and if these funds could go for another expenditure within the village. Um, I, I have trouble of, I see the same thing you do, Dennis, is that trying to get through all those items in that one workshop day, I, I don't know that 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 five thousand couldn't be spent differently.
Most of these things and these ideas in here, I just don't think that we could accomplish.
Five thousand dollars worth.
This is a very experienced trainer, he does this across the US uh for Fortune five hundred companies all the way down to municipal governments, so if he put this proposal together and said he could do it, I'm confident he can do it. Uh, and cover the things that are most important to our village.
Department heads, right?
It's focused on your um leadership team and the board. Some of the work would be done prior to actually coming to the workshop, so such as surveys, um, getting a pulse on the, on the organization, a pulse on the board. Trying to figure out what the, the staff and the department heads feel are um pain points, pinch points or needs, as well as the same with the board. So there would be a lot of work done actually prior to actually coming to the meeting, to the workshop, which is why it can be um completed in one day.
I guess I still like, I get that, like the harvest of information, but the chewing of the fat, I think is going to be way more than one day to get through that list, even with pre-information.
Don't you think one day might be worth that, I mean, we're, we're trying to run this village and there's tension.
Oh, yeah.
If this is going to help alleviate tension in general, I feel like that would be beneficial to all of us and to them. We've heard from each of them something, so I, I, I understand it's five thousand dollars we could spend elsewhere. And I'm new to this, you know, but I al- I also feel like this could be beneficial just based on things that I've experienced.
Because this was a grant and it's not money that the village taxpayers have paid, it felt like a good opportunity. Um, it's not something I would have asked to use our own village money for, but it is a, it is an opportunity.
It's a gift.
It's a gift, yeah, it's, it really is, it's an opportunity to be able to do something productive that could really help all of us.
Now, did you have the rest of staff look at this?
Yes.
You guys come, come, came to a consensus, this is the program you wanted to look at?
Yes, that's correct, and department heads are all here, so if you want their consensus or conc- concurrence, you can ask them to shake their heads, yes, yes or no?
Well, to me, and I've felt the brunt of a lot lately too. Anything, oh god, I don't know, because I'm going to be called liberal, but anything that can help you to navigate this whole situation that we are in. Maybe I don't take, you know, fifty percent of that information, but maybe I take fifty percent and it will help me. So I'm on board with it and I actually would like to make the motion to approve it.
I'll second.
I think it's a great idea, I think it's gonna get everybody on the same page. It, it's, there's too much animosity and we, nobody knows what everybody else is doing. Put it all together and see what we can come up with.
And working together rather than just you there and us here, or each of us coming in individually, talking with you. We'll all be together in the same room, talking.
There's a motion to approve, all in favor? Anyone opposed?
Opposed.
Billy, did you vote?
Yes and aye.
Okay, thirteen point two, status of the boundary agreement between village of Salem Lakes and the village of Paddock Lake expiring on December twentieth, twenty twenty six.
Alright, so Frank, could please bring up the math, that'd be great. This is simply a notification to the public, it is nothing more, nothing less, it is a notification, so. To give you some history, the village of Paddock Lake and the town of Salem entered into a twenty-year agreement in December of two thousand and six. To transition acreage from the town of Salem to the village of Paddock Lake. That area is notated in the green hash marks on the screen. The green is already Paddock Lake, the green hash marks overlaid on top of the yellow is currently Salem Lakes. So the land was transferred on January first, twenty twenty seven, as the agreement sunsets on December twentieth of twenty twenty six. Therefore, beginning January first of twenty twenty seven, all land shown on the map in that green hash marks will transfer to the village of Paddock Lake. As will all village services, so we will no longer service that area after. Beginning on January first, twenty twenty seven, so that would include services such as, but not limited to. Street maintenance, snow plowing, streetlights, zoning code enforcement, fire protection, taxes. Any future sewer that isn't already developed prior to December twentieth of twenty twenty six and water service. So everything, anything that we currently provide services on, it all transfers on January one, twenty twenty seven. This is just, I'm just the messenger on this, because this happened twenty years ago, well nineteen years ago at this point. And so it's really important that people start to understand that if you live in those areas. Your tax bill will come from Paddock Lake as well, which you will see a change in your tax bill, I did have the mill rates polled. The Salem Lakes mill rate is two point nine two seven three, the Paddock Lake mill rate is four. So if you see a, a change in your tax bills, if you live in those areas or own those lands, that would be why, because it changed hands. The sewer service area agreement also sunsets at the exact same time, those are one document, they're contained together. So the boundary agreement is called the cooperative plan, and the sewer service area agreement is contained within that. So anything that is not currently hooked up to sewer. Prior to December twentieth of twenty twenty six will sunset, so after December twentieth of twenty twenty six. If you are already a Salem Lakes, it hooked up to the Salem, Salem Lakes system, you will remain hooked up to it, but if you are not. Then you will be hooked up to the Paddock Lake system at the point that that area develops or on your own private septic system. Hookup would be when you are hooked up from the road to the house and you become an actual paying customer. I believe that is correct, it would be the lateral, it's not the sewer line in the road, it's the connection because. In our sewer service area agreement, it's defined as customer, so the customer would be the paying individual paying the sewer bill.
The way it is right now, if, if we supply it, I mean. It's automatic because it's in the agreement, after the agreement expires, we could sell them that service. Is that correct or not? Right now, it's, it, right now, if they have development before twelve, twenty twenty six, we provide the sewer.
If the customer is already existing, so if, if the lateral is connected to the home, that constitutes a customer. So then they would remain permanently as part of our system.
Oh, I don't, that's not what I'm talking about, I mean, we can sell our service, we do to Randall, for example. The ski hills and the old Gander Mountain, we provide the sewer.
Oh sure, so that would be done through a separate legal agreement, that's correct, so you could. Correct, through a separate legal agreement, but this sewer service area agreement sunsets, so you would have to have a new sewer service agreement.
You'd have to negotiate another.
And there's nothing in this current agreement relative to cost to the customer.
So there are, so they would pay our sewer rates, and then there's connection fees as well.
But I also thought we said that, for example, over in Lake Shangri-La area where we have Bristol residents.
Right.
On our system, that we can set a rate different than what the village residents.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, we, we can do that, there's nothing that says you can or can't, it's permissive.
Can I make a suggestion? When we send out tax bills this year, I think we need to include. A flyer on this, but a better map so that people can look to see if their street is on, like. It's hard to tell where the roads are on there, do you see what I'm saying? You know, we could identify Highway fifty, we could identify eighty-three. I think that would be a good thing to send out so that people have a year to prepare. And then they can't say that they didn't get notified until it was.
I do have a question, when they, when they annex this property, did the, did the? Landowners vote on it or they just go hoop, this is it?
They, that was, that's the way it was, it was, and there's a lot of people that know they're going into Paddock Lake and they came to us and they worked happily. But it was the town negotiating with the village. In hopes of stopping all the annexation that was going on.
Well, I understand that, but I, I thought that they would have had to vote on it to get you, that's weird.
It's like. That's not unusual, I mean, that's the way it was.
Can someone in that. Propose, well, not propose, but in the new. Boundary, if this become, when this becomes. Effective on January one, twenty twenty seven, if they're on the boundary between us and Paddock Lake. Can they request annex back into Salem Lakes?
That would be a Ramsey question and way beyond my knowledge.
In other words, they become, they find out they're in the village of Paddock Lake, but they're right on that boundary line.
Touching one of our properties.
Probably not, I mean, unless they, unless they were to seek some kind of remedy in court that the. Prior annexation was faulty in some way, I mean, the boundary agreement governs and when I looked at it, and I've only looked at it little. Bite sizes here and there, and they've got provisions in there that called for interim attachments over these twenty years. And what Cassandra is talking about is the final attachment, you know, and that's common. And all of this was negotiated, as she said, twenty years ago, so unless, you know, once they're annexed in. If it, if, if it's a final swoop, pulling them all together in. Unless they find some impropriety in the processor and the boundary agreement, that's it, that's the end game, I think.
So conversely then, if they're in the hashed area today. And someone wants to. Do I want to go with this? Let's say that someone is in the village of Salem Lakes today.
Yeah.
And wants to be included in the hashed area, can they annex over to the village of Paddock Lake?
No, they would have to do, they would have to follow separate annexation procedures to do that, I believe there's a way in which you can self-petition. To become annexed, but they would not be governed by this boundary agreement.
Okay.
Yeah, but they, they could do that when we were a town naturally. But now that we're a village, it makes, it's entirely different. When this was negotiated, we were a town, we were the lowest rung on the la, on the ladder. I mean, villages are supposed to annex from towns to grow. But we were worth over a billion dollars and they were three hundred million. And they wanted to grow naturally, Silver Lake, I think was a hundred and seventy-five million when we annexed into Silver Lake. But town.
Basically a land grab before the.
Well, when we put in sewer, all our lakes and everything, that's when our community grew, the way that it did, and that's why we got so big. But we wanted to protect all that. And towns have difficulty doing that, you have to be of a village to protect it.
This is just happening.
Yes. Yep, we have no role in this other than just to notify the public at this point, this was signed twenty years ago. This is a very matter-of-fact conversation, this is happening. And I really wanted no more nor less out of this, just to make sure that the public knew and the board knew what those dates were.
Thank you.
And not to put any more money into them areas out of our pocket.
Well, we have to maintain it.
You have to maintain it, yeah, you can't not maintain it, so between now and then, you know, if there's a pothole, we have to fill it, if there's. Snow falls, we've got to go plow it, so you will continue to maintain it between now and then. But it will transition on January first, twenty twenty seven, to Paddock Lake's responsibility.
Okay, I think we're gonna move on. Thirteen point three, village of Paddock Lakes request for response to propose preliminary plat of Brenner Fields. And preliminary sanitary sewer plan review for Brenner Fields.
So this is in an effort to always be fully transparent to the board and not put my John Hancock on something I don't have permission to put it on. So this is information based on, we received information from Paddock Lake asking us to provide. Response, over the past year, there has been some work between Paddock Lake and Salem Lakes. To work on what is considered a joint development along Highway eighty-three. In March, however, the village became aware that the Brenner Fields concept was sent to the state DOT for review. When the village received a copy, it was clear that the proposal did not incorporate the through road that had been discussed over the past two decades. Which would connect Highway eighty-three and County F by way of Falcon Way. This through connection has been shown on plans dating back to at least two thousand and six. Which you will see in the images on the screen in a minute. And is included in the twenty fourteen Highway eighty-three access management plan, that was a joint effort between Salem Lakes, Paddock Lake, Kenosha County, and the state DOT. The Highway eighty-three access management plan can be found on our website and those links are pretty easy to find. Additionally, the plan that was submitted to the state was not a complete plan, as it did not include the southern half of the housing development. Which would be in the village of Salem Lakes. By not including both in the plan submitted to the state, a greater share of the cost of traffic impacts for the joint development. Would then be shifted to the village of Salem Lakes residents and taxpayers at the development, at the time of the development for the Salem Lakes side. If the developer didn't choose to pick up the total cost of the infrastructure improvements. This is because the state looks at cumulative impacts of the traffic. Which would mean both the northern half in Paddock Lake and the southern half would be looked at cumulatively. In a true sense of a shared joint development, they should be looked at cumulatively, not separately. So when the two developments are considered together, the cumulative impacts would be higher. Thereby requiring additional and more expensive traffic improvements. So again, in the true spirit of joint development, those costs should be shared by both and analyzed jointly at the same time of the DOT analysis. So that's just some background, now let's look at the pictures. So this picture, for the purposes of tonight's discussion, will focus on the plat submitted to the village from Paddock Lake. Which they've requested comment on by June twenty-seven. Which is why I need your direction this evening. So this shows the Brenner Fields, this is the northern half of the development. And if you note, there is no through road that would connect Falcon Way and Highway eighty-three to County F. Now, if you go to the next page. You'll see the two thousand and six neighborhood plan, that does show a connection. You can see, it's a little bit hard to see, but maybe Brian, if you could run your cursor across. There is a connection there, but there's also one on the north, if you go north, right there, down. Right there, where your mouse is, follow it across, so it shows it up north as well as following that curve down, so that's Highway F. And then if you go back up to the road that you were just on a second ago and follow it down to the south. And over, it connects, it would, it should connect at Falcon Way, so minor modifications there. But it does show, again, in two thousand and six neighborhood plan, the connection, and this was shared with Paddock Lake, so next. This was also shared with the state DOT, by the way, so on this next one, it shows a previous concept by. Map got flipped, but that's okay, so this shows state Highway eighty-three going east-west, which it should be north-south. But if it was flipped north-south, you can follow that road again from Falcon Way right there. And there you go, and go north. If it was the right orientation, you would see that, now you're going west again, and then it connects to County F. In both of those plans, what you would notice is that the connection point is north of the curve on County Highway F. So in all of the previous conversations, prior to my ever getting here, the correct connection point was north of the curve on how. County Highway F, so without Paddock Lake showing that connection. We would not have the ability to do a connection at a later date to County Highway F. Because the land to the south of that curve, there's a triangle parcel of land. That is not owned by the developer, it's owned by an individual with the last name Weiss. And so there would be no controlling interest of that to ensure that a road could go through, and it also is not shown in any of the previous highway plans. So if you go then to the next graphic. It's the twenty fourteen Highway eighty-three access management plan. It also shows connections at eighty-three and Falcon Way and at County Highway F. It is really, really important to note that this was a joint effort between Kenosha County, Ben Feeblecorn participated. Paddock Lake, Timpa Panda, and Harry Burns participated. Town of Salem, Pat Casey participated, and the Wisconsin DOT, which had multiple staff. This was a signed document from all of the entities that said that they agreed. That this was how the Highway eighty-three access management would be managed and handled. Again, it showed that through connection from Falcon Way to County Highway F, in this one, it was at the curve on Highway F. But nowhere on any of the previous plans did it show a connection south of that curve on Highway F. Everything showed it either at or north, which requires joint coordination. Between Paddock Lake and Salem Lakes to ensure that this happens, the Brenner Fields plat does not show that at all. And so. I need direction, if you go to the last page. So the top paragraph kind of summarizes. I would like to request permission from the village board to send a response back to the village of Paddock Lake requesting the through connection at the time of development. Or the right-of-way maintained to connect to Highway F, protected and guaranteed through a binding legal agreement. Per all of the previous studies, the best location for the connection is north of the curve on Highway F. Without a legal agreement securing that connection point before this development moves forward, you would lose the access. And through connection that has been discussed and agreed upon for nearly two decades. This has been clearly communicated starting last summer. And I have spoken with the entire board, one by one, and asked for consensus that that is your intent. And wish, and the board has said yes, that you do wish for that through connection as has been shown in previous plans. Going back two decades, you did want to see that maintained. So all I need is permission to put that in a formal response back to Paddock Lake. And if you don't agree, I need that as well, and what do you want me to put back in a response to their plat? And the, the picture shown on your screen, if, if you can zoom out just a little bit, Brian. This shows both the north and the south development as proposed by Bear Realty. And so this will be on the Planning Commission agenda for July. And it is for concept review only. I, I want to clarify what concept review means, just in case anyone in the public or the board is curious. Concept review means simply that, this is just a concept for the southern half, so I don't want anyone to get all worried about the July meeting. It does not mean if it goes to the Planning Commission that a shovel is gonna go on the ground, it simply means this is a concept and Bear is asking for direction. So it's already been through those phases in Paddock Lake and it does not show. On this joint development full picture, it does not show a through road. So that would be what we would be sending back is, if you do indeed still concur that two decades worth of research and reports. That you'd like to continue with that, that's what I would put down. If you don't. Correct.
Make a motion to have you proceed with a letter. I totally agree. Uh, it would make a motion to have you proceed with a letter. Uh, as you've just explained, uh, that it's showing that road that everybody agreed to originally. Now the developers change the idea here, but.
I'll second that.
I guess I would be more, and I guess I'm a little dismayed at how this whole project has played out. Um, I would like to go back and ask for them to put the through road and resubmit to the DOT as a full project. That's my, because that is how it should be done. And I don't, um, I'm not happy that only the uh, northern side was submitted. I don't think that that was uh, fair or right when we were approached as a joint project on this, a joint venture. Um, that is not how I feel it's being presented.
And I totally agree uh, with the, your, you know, memory of how this whole thing came up. But in answering his letter or the letter of the 27th, I think that.
Would you amend your motion though to include?
Resubmit it to the DOT.
Bear subdivision to the DOT, so it includes both.
It should be included both at the same time.
Well, we haven't decided whether or not we want to proceed, but you know, there are, there are some other things that are considered as we know. The financing and what have you.
Understand, I understand that. But couldn't the DOT take into consideration the whole project? Or they can't because it hasn't been passed our board? I guess that's the question.
It's a horse a piece. They could look at the whole project. I've already sent an email to the state DOT and asked them to consider the whole project. Um, Bear did state that they were going to do it in two phases. And so the state DOT said because it's a phased project, they don't have to consider the entire project at the same time. So um,
However.
When we started the project a year ago of just the concept and discussion and development, uh, I thought it was going to go to the DOT as one master concept. That is not in fact what has happened. Um, and so this is just an opportunity to share with the board where we're at and the process of how it got here and the why, and then ask for direction.
So if they put this through road in um, on our side at the time of development, who's going to pay for that and any traffic improvements then? That would be on our taxpayers?
It depends on how the development moves forward. So there are multiple ways a development can move forward. One is fully funded by the developer, which is historically how things would go through prior to 2008. Um, after 2008, it seems like a lot more development has been funded through the use of tax increment financing or TID districts. So they could ask for that where the developer would then ask for the, the board to authorize the formation of a TID to fund the in um, development of all the infrastructure. That would not be a Cassandra decision. None of these are me decisions. I just want to make sure the public knows that and the board. These are board decisions. These are planning commission decisions. So it, it's either developer funded, TID funded, or village funded. If the village chose to put the infrastructure in, we could do that at our own expense, and then that would be on our taxpayers. Um, by not looking at the entire project collectively at the same time, north and south, a lot of the traffic improvements will be shifted to our side because again, the cumulative impact. Um, and so that would mean that the cost of the through road would potentially be higher um, when the DOT considers.
So the north side entrance is off of the uh, directly across from QuickTrip, correct?
It goes out the yeah, QuickTrip.
And that's the only entrance.
Uh, showing in this plat, yes.
Correct. So hypothetically, if we were to develop the lower half and we put that road in, we are going to be the ones that have to pay for the brunt of the repair because guess what everyone is going to use? They're going to use that entrance. They are not going to use the QuickTrip entrance unless you're at QuickTrip or you live right up there. So again, I am on board with asking, um, I would even go further and say that it has to be a shared cost or the developer has to um, assume all that cost. I don't think that it is fair or right to ask our taxpayers to pay for that at all, when it's going to be utilized by both.
Can they ignore the letter and just continue? So no matter what we do, they may be able to do whatever they want.
Yes, they're just asking.
They can still do that. We don't have to do our side.
Yeah, yeah.
Correct.
Yes.
Right. But you.
I would amend my motion if uh, but they're just asking to review of the plat or but back there by June 27th, that we could say uh, we want the roads to Pat to go through there. And uh, you to pay for it, or the developer pay for it.
Or it's a shared.
Or a shared.
It needs to be a shared cost, right?
But right now, I think your bigger, bigger concern in this is that all of the previous plans showed the through road going in at or north of that curve. And unless Paddock Lake shows that, it's, you're not going to be able to get the through road in. And so that's, I think your bigger concern right now is time is of the essence to be able to make that ask. Cause as you know, once a housing development is in, you're locked for life. You can't really change it. So if the through road doesn't go in at the time of development, it will never go in. Um, unless for some reason we're able to secure some access to the Weiss property and get a through road in at that point. But uh, we don't own it. Developer doesn't own it. And it would be that Weiss property is Paddock Lake, so we would have no control over that parcel. You can ask for it, but unless it's in some sort of a legal binding agreement, there's no guarantee that it would ever go in.
Yeah. That's not.
No, the southern half hasn't even gone through concept review. It will be going through concept review in your July Planning Commission meeting to seek feedback from the Planning Commission on, do you like the basic concept of this? Is there too many houses? Are there not enough houses? Do you like townhomes? Do you not like townhomes? So that's what the concept review is to, is to look at the big picture and give the developer feedback on does this check the boxes that Salem Lakes wants or does it not? Uh, and that's really an important point too for the board and the public to understand is Cassandra doesn't make the development decisions. Cassandra just helps get them to the table. Um, so the concepts come to the board and the Planning Commission for the Planning Commission and the board to make decisions on. I just helped to get them to you. And then the, the Planning Commission and the board says, I like it or I don't like it, or we want you to make these tweaks here or there. That's how the process of development works.
Mm hmm. We need to do something.
In years past, when we've had the, the both developments, we have mandated that there's a little kiddie park in there. Where uh, you know, people push their child on a stroller, go on a swing set, what have you, and I don't see any parks.
So that's not the purpose of tonight's discussion. That will be in the concept review. So if you want to make comments like that, you would come to the Planning Commission meeting. That isn't for this evening.
Our side, I mean, there, we're reviewing their plat.
Oh, oh, you would like me to add that to their side, that there's no park or playground.
God, I don't know that we can.
I don't know.
To do that, I think.
When it gets to ours, we can, can we not request them not to?
I think we're getting off topic here and we can't. Oh, we cannot talk about that. So that's in planning stages. We're here to talk about.
For the sewer service area agreement piece of it though, because they did ask for that response as well. Um, the, the response on that would be consistent with our boundary area cooperative plan and sewer service area agreement. Um, I don't really need any direction on that because in your sewer service area agreement, it says that you'd have to be connected by December 20th of 2026. So that doesn't really need a whole lot of response, other than I just tell them that they have to be consistent with our sewer service area agreement.
I would like to see more added to our response though, other than just um, no, like it, yeah. I'd like us to see more put in there.
Well, they're, they're saying, you know, if you have any objections to the plat, advise them.
Correct.
So we could be, I couldn't, uh, the ones we talked about initially with the road, that's what I made a motion to.
Mm hmm.
Maybe when he had that there's something else you object to the plat, that's what he's asking for us to do.
And certainly shoot Cassandra an email with any additional concerns you want. Your motion tonight will be something to the effect, uh, motion to direct staff and uh, legal to respond to the request for response with, with concerns as identified tonight or as further directed to Cassandra. There's a deadline.
Yeah. So we are, we are going to have objections. That's what we're saying.
Yes.
We need to be clear on what the motion is. So um, are you withdrawing your motion?
Yeah, I withdraw my motion.
Okay, so then let's have some discussion on what we want to be clear with going forward before another motion is made. So I would like to be clear that this through road has to be put through at the time of development and it either has to be a cost shared between the two communities equally or it has to be a cost that the developer absorbs.
Take it one step beyond that because if that shared road goes in, uh, more than likely, there's going to be a stoplight put on Highway F and Highway 50.
Well, yeah, and all of the improvements.
Yes.
Any traffic improvements. And that is the part that I, I think that this has to be resubmitted to the, to the DOT with um, the full.
But in a shared road like that, I, we're just, we're just talking.
In Salem, Salem and half in Paddock Lake.
It.
Good majority of it to be in Salem.
Except for the part that goes north, the curve. So they'd have to cut off that big lot and work.
So we're back to that is what we want you to tell, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're looking at the Highway 83 Access Management Plan.
It was formally approved by the Paddock Lake Board, the County, Kenosha County, and the Town of Salem.
I mean, I think that is, yeah.
So you could reference the 2014 photo in the website or plan?
I think we can actually reference them all. Um, but as far as submitting to the DOT, I guess that's the part that, you know, how do we want to address that? Because yes, if they agree that the road is going to be a shared cost or they're going to absorb the cost, well, then if they come back and they say, well, a roundabout needs to go there or a traffic light needs to go there. Um.
They're, they're just asking for a review of their preliminary plat. They're not talking about.
Well, but that, but that has a big thing to do with it. I think, I feel like, you know.
That's the whole point, yes. Because and I love the opinion, go back to what Remzi was referring to, is we have objections and then send those objections to Cassandra and Remzi or whatever the case might be and let them formally put it into that letter.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay. Oh, we didn't make it. We didn't make it.
I thought you did.
He didn't, no, no.
Oh, your, your motion would be something like, um, and I'll say it slowly so you can all follow and
Okay.
that a clerk can take it. It would be a motion directing staff and legal to respond to Paddock Lake's request or response to proposed preliminary plat Brenner Fields including concerns involving whatever the concerns, concerns involving lack of a through road.
Don't be lazy.
And resubmission to the DOT and other concerns addressed tonight. Or that's that, or that you may submit to Cassandra in the coming days.
Second.
Make a motion to have staff and legal proceed with the objections we discussed this evening, one of which is the road and others that can be received in the next couple of days, because this has to be there by the 27th. Uh, two staff to be added in the letter could submitted by June 27th.
Yes.
Look my second to Dennis's statement.
Okay, so Dennis in fully, um, could I ask that? Um, you draft this letter and we can put it on the 623 agenda or or?
Sure.
What do you think?
So there will.
Then they'll get it on the 24th, right?
There will be a special meeting on June 23rd, following your capital plan presentation um, to be able to address this topic then, yes.
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 And just to let you know, you won't be getting it that far ahead this time.
It should only be two items, really.
Yes.
The other item and this one.
Correct. So you'll probably get it on a Friday because I need a couple of days to draft it.
And that's fine. That's fine.
Thank you.
So I think um, that's what I would like, just to make sure that we are all on the same page before a response is sent over to them.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, great. Fourteen point one, closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight five sub one sub G for purposes of conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body. Who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or may be involved specifically concerning discussions and action on notice of claim filed by roll offs pursuant to Wisconsin statutes eight ninety three point eight zero sub one G. And closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight five sub one sub E deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. And pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight five sub one sub G. For purposes of conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation, which it is or may be involved specifically regarding claims with the Village of Paddock Lake over contractual rights, remedies, and obligations for the heavy rescue fire truck and parties agreement for firefighting, fire inspection, and rescue services to be provided by the Village of Salem Lakes to the Village of Paddock Lake.
So moved.
Second.
Bill Barhite.
So moved.
Thank you. Angela.
Yes.
Pete.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Run, and I'm a yes, we're in quote.
Motion to disallow the claim.
Second.
Who had the second?
Rock, paper, scissors.
Angela?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Run?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Motion carries. Fourteen point two, closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight five, sub one, sub E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified business, public business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. And pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight five, sub one, sub G for purposes of conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation which it is or may be involved specifically regarding claims with the village of Paddock Lake over contractual rights, remedies, and obligations for the heavy rescue fire truck, and the parties agreement for firefighting, fire inspection, and rescue services to be provided by the village of Sand Lakes to the village of Paddock Lake. There is nothing to report on that?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? We're adjourned.